Call to order, the April 26, 2022, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted in person and via remote means in accordance with applicable law. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, in-person attendance of members of the public and board members will be permitted. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting live may do so on their television by tuning to Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26 or online at www.northandovercam.org. Every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we'll post on the town and North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript or other comprehensive record of proceeding as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to participate in public hearings but not attend the meeting in person, please email your question or comment prior to or during the meeting to Gene Enright at j e n r i g h t at northandoverma.gov. The question or comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly. Okay, Gene, could we take roll, please?
Here, having a hard time hearing people. If you could get closer to microphones, please, thank you.
Okay, so Pete is attending remotely. Kelly Cormier?
Here.
Again, Kelly's attending remotely. Alyssa Koenig?
Here.
Sean Kevlin?
Here.
John Simons?
Here.
Eton Goldberg?
I am here. Okay, so we are not quite ready on 198 Dale Street?
No.
All right, so then let's do...we'll just start at the beginning, then. When you guys are ready, let me know, we can take you. Continued Public Hearings Annual Town Meeting Zoning Bylaw Amendment Articles. Article 27, amend the zoning bylaws to establish an inclusionary housing requirement. Article 28, amend the zoning bylaws to establish Article 19, mixed-use overlay district. Article 29, amend the zoning map of the town of North Andover. So, Gene, just a summary of where we are with everything?
The board has made recommendations on all three of the zoning amendment articles. I have an email that did come in towards the end of the last meeting that did not get read into the record, so I've provided it to you. It's related to the mixed-use overlay recommendations.
Okay, so we've already made our recommendations, but we'll read that into the record. After we made our recommendations, the Board of Selectmen, the Select Board, I should say, met and also made recommendations. There was a lot of public input on that as well, which was nice to see. They voted in favor of the articles. They also voted in favor of the inclusionary housing article, which was nice as well. So, to the inclusionary housing, nothing we're doing on that today. Any comments come in on that?
No.
Okay, so we'll carry that till the next meeting, which is May 3?
Yes.
Okay. Article 28 and 29, I'll read into the record this comment that came in towards the end of our last meeting. "Please do not vote to recommend Articles 28 and 29 as the massive redevelopment will adversely affect the quality of life, health, and welfare of everyone in surrounding neighborhoods. The size of this development sets a dangerous precedent for future projects as larger than all the developments in the last 10 years combined. There are also health hazards associated with living in close proximity to prolonged construction and demolition, especially for children." Thank you, Lynn Jacobic, 105 Berkeley Road. Okay, any other comments that have come in on that? On those articles?
No.
Okay, and warrant and planning...warrant has gone to print, correct?
The warrant has, the planning board report has not.
Okay, okay. All right, so that's all we need to do for those. Those public hearings will be continued until May 3. Right, May 3, that's our date. Okay. Next, 1450 Osgood Street, H.I.P. Transaction Services LLC and 1600 Osgood Street LLC, application for signed master plan permits.
So again, this is continued public hearing, so it's pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 21 as well.
Yes, this is a continued public hearing. Will be held remotely as well as in person. Our applicants are here in person. People can go to the website to get the details about these hybrid public hearings. If you want to participate in this public hearing, you can email your question or comment to Gene Enright at j e n r i g h t at northandoverma.gov. You can also watch online Comcast Channel 8, Verizon Channel 26, or at www.northandovercam.org. Okay, Gene, have we had any questions or comments from the public come in on this?
No.
Okay, then I will turn it over to...well, Gene, why don't you tell us where we left off, and then before we turn it over to the applicant?
Sure. The draft decisions that I had prepared for the last meeting have been carried to this meeting. They will likely need to lead some edits to address the board's review of the proposed backlit signs and the new plan dates. The applicants will submit presentation material, which they have, and I have it displayed on the screen, that they're going to review with the board to address comments at the last hearing.
Okay, so let's do that.
Mr. Chair and other members of the board, for the record, John Smolak, Smolak and Vaughn, attorney for the applicants, both 1600 Osgood Street LLC as well as H.I.P. Transaction Services, the owner of 1450 Osgood Street, Lot B. Since our last meeting, we've come back to the board with some follow-up information related to two items. We'll try to keep our presentation brief. The items relate to the 495 directional sign that was requested from the March 15 hearing. And then also, we've provided and will be presenting some additional information on signage, for internally illuminated signage, as well as provide some examples of signage in town that, since our last meeting, we decided to provide to the board as an example of other signs that are out in the area, and as well as foot candle measurements in terms of the intensity of the light. So, before we start, what I'd like to do is mention that with me this evening is Maggie Uzsey, Vice President of Development with Hillwood. Also with us is Frank Holmes of Langin Engineering, our project engineer. Also Gary McCoy of Poyant Signs, our project sign consultant. And also here for 1600 Osgood Street is Michael Rosen, Attorney Michael Rosen. And with that said, I'll turn the discussion over to Frank Holmes.
Okay, thank you. So, Gene, can you advance the next slide, please? The first couple of slides here are just some recent photos. These were taken on April 15th. They just show the progress of the project. So you can see in the foreground, Building 20 and 21 that was to remain. And then behind that is the Amazon building, which is well underway, as you can see, most of the roof is on, most of the skin is on the building there. And so, next slide just has a view from the other direction, from the west. And these, again, are just to give you all a sense of where the project is. Okay, so...
It's on now.
Okay, so this slide shows the location with the letters T and U that are in the top-left-hand portion of the slide and the top-right-hand portion. Those are the location of the two Route 495 directional signs that we've added to the plans since our last meeting. The rest of those signs, we discussed at the last meeting, but T and U are the additions. They're both located on the outbound lanes of the north, signalized, and the south, signalized driveway. Okay, so next slide, please. And this just shows those two signs in isolation on the site plan, and, you know, also shows what that sign will look like. So on the right-hand side, the intent here is that, you know, all four of the signs will be mounted on one pole, and, you know, giving direction to vehicles leaving that they should take a left to head north to 495. And so with that, I think I'm going to turn it over to Gary Poyant from Poyant Signs to talk more about the signage.
Eton, is now a time to ask a question, or should we wait?
Is it a question about what we just talked about?
Yes.
Yeah, go for it.
So just a question on...yeah, I see where it's indicating on the signs, the 495 signs, the directionals, it's indicating to take a left, but I thought we discussed a sign that said no right turn, being really clear about that.
So, to be honest, I didn't recall that as being the conversation. However, there are vehicles that can leave there and take a right. And so, you know, we think the Amazon drivers are going to be instructed that they can only go left. This sign will make it more clear to them as they're leaving, but we can't restrict all vehicles from taking a right out of the driveway.
I guess I would ask the rest of the board, and, you know, Eton and Gene, what are your recollections on this? I thought this was a...there was quite a lot of discussion when we first started about making sure that there weren't trucks taking the right-hand turn?
Right, so it's trucks, so it's correct, so it's trucks, but I guess what I'm hearing is there are certain vehicles, you know, people who work there, people who are visiting, things like that, will be able to certainly take a right. So it's all trucks. And again, I guess the question would be what would a sign say? Does it say all trucks turn left? Does that...we run the risk then of being either over-inclusive or under-inclusive of what is the truck and things like that.
And is a pickup truck a truck?
Right, so we maybe...so you're right, in the sense that the trucks are required to turn left, the question, you know, the warehouse trucks. Hopefully, with the instruction and our permitting, plus the signs, those two things do the trick together, because if not, then they're in violation of their permit, and then we're going to have problems. So I could understand why they'd be hesitant to put...how to set up the signs, because you don't want to be over or under-inclusive.
And Kelly, to answer your question, my notes do indicate that you requested no right turn, but I think they're just...
Yeah, I just...I'm sorry, and I'm just trying to recollect back when we first had the discussions about it, and neighbors were kind of questioning, you know, the traffic. I thought that was a pretty set item, that they would make sure all be...all trucks, you know, the larger trucks, not talking cars, people who work there, coming and going, that trucks would be required to take a left. And I was expecting the signage to more clearly indicate that.
Yeah, I mean, it is a condition in the...it is a condition in the permit, so it's just a question of how specific do we want the signs to be, and if we are more specific on them, do we run the risk of having problems with that? I'm not...and I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I would think that someone could...traffic could...you know, warehouse trucks, left-hand, left turn only. There's a lot of signs going on. I would think there'd be something that...we can't be the only ones with this type of problem. I would think there'd be some solution.
Isn't there a standard no commercial truck sign that were like no commercial vehicles turning right, right? Because wouldn't this fall within a commercial vehicle, right?
If I...may I respond? Just, I mean, they're good comments. As you recall, from way back when in our original decision, we actually, for the Amazon site, there is a specific provision that provides that no tractor-trailer trucks may exit out left. There are certain circumstances where...and those are from the tractor-trailer trucks that come from Lot B, which is the Amazon lot, for obvious reasons. We don't have a similar restriction for Lot A, and there's a good reason for that, and that is because there are very few docks on the building, an existing building, and plus you have two inner entrances that require a right turnout only. So both of those conditions indicate, mandated that, you know, there was no need for a prohibition on right turnout with respect to those, with respect to Lot A. And with respect to the far northern entrance and the far southern entrance, as you may recall, from our amended permit back in November or October or November of last year, Mastod required us to connect the driveways for Lot A and Lot B with respect to the far north and the far southerly entrance. And so as a result, there could be some trucks from Lot A that come out of those main entrances from the signal intersection and take a right. But we also wanted to be conscious of the fact that, for example, you know, trash trucks that are picking up trash, I mean, the facility is right on the, you know, adjacent property, so, or just right off to the whole road. So that was purposely left out as well for that reason. But the whole purpose of the left turnout was specifically for the Amazon tractor-trailer trucks, because that was the major traffic that would be coming out and going to 495. And frankly, it's probably faster for a tractor-trailer truck to go left onto the Bradford Connector to 495 than it is to travel the other way through, you know, through Osgood Street to Sutton Street or other, some other place, because it's just a slower alternative. But we did have that thorough discussion way back when, and I just wanted to, you know, just update the board on that particular rationale.
So would an appropriate sign be Amazon trucks turn left?
I guess my thought a little bit here is that everybody has the same objective in mind, is to control the flow of large traffic. I think Eton's point's well-taken. It's when you're trying to put in a regime that manages it, you've got to be careful you don't overdo it, because, I mean, it's a similar problem in scope to what we end up with any site plan review of, you know, oh, there's going to be trash, or there's going to be this, or there's going to be traffic. And it's hard to put into decision every possibility, every contingency. I kind of think what we have here is a reasonable starting point. We could always come back and ratchet it up if it doesn't work, but if you try to go the other way and it creates confusion and problems, it's hard to undo it. So it feels to me that this is kind of a reasonable solution, and we should just look into it in another year, if, you know, or two years, or however long it takes, and see if there's a problem or not.
I mean, it is an obligation of the Hillwood and, you know, by operation of Amazon to make sure that their tractor-trailer trucks and their vendors do take that route north when they're exiting out. So that's an enforceable condition. You have the police station right across the street as well, from a policing mechanism. And so, again, that was the rationale from what I recall way back when. I mean, those are good points. I just think that there has to be some flexibility in terms of traffic flow there.
And a follow-up traffic study is conditioned that could incorporate the travel paths.
Okay, okay, so good questions. Why don't we keep going, and then, you know, ultimately, when we vote on it, we can, if anyone wants to make a motion for amendments, they can.
Scroll up a little bit higher, so I can see the rest of the copy.
Eton, can you hear me?
Now we can.
So I can see the copy. Under each photo, there's some copy.
Can you hold on a second? Peter, did you have something you wanted to add?
I did, thank you.
Okay, good.
I appreciate everybody's comment about the warehouse trucks turn left. I personally think Kelly has a good point, that this received quite a bit of discussion, and my recollection as well, is that we were going to have signage specific to this point. I don't really think that we need to debate the exact wording of it, but I don't understand why we would not have signage specific to this point, warehouse trucks left turn only, or something like that. So, you know, leave it to the board as a whole, but we discussed this a lot, and I thought that's what we were headed towards.
We have no problem with that restriction if you want to impose a sign that says no Amazon tractor-trailer trucks right turn, or something to that effect.
Okay, from which, again, so again, the devil's in the detail, from both T and U, because I think there may be a point where from T you might turn right to go into U, though you can't go further down, right? So you, from the northernmost driveway, there may be a reason based on traffic or what else is going on, where you may take a right turn if you're a tractor truck, but just to go into that other driveway. Is that...if that's not possible, then fine, then you could do...
I guess that is.
I mean, again, so...
Catch you.
No, I don't think so either, but again, this is what I worry about when we're so specific about the signs. And we did talk about it, but just seeing these, if everyone knows the conditions, again, I mean, if we say Amazon warehouse trucks, is everyone going to have that same definition? I mean, the only way I definitely, I mean, unless you want to actually take from the permit what it says in the permit and put that on a sign, you know? I don't remember what the condition was. I don't know if you have it, John.
It's pretty lengthy.
Right. I mean, what are the different sizes of trucks, right?
I mean, what we've identified is tractor-trailer trucks. I mean, that's what your vehicle is going to be in and out of that, out of the Amazon building. Because as you recall, there, I mean, that's, there wouldn't be any of the smaller-type trucks, the last mile, the blue vans or anything like that, so we had that discussion some time ago.
So I just want to make sure we're covered, then if we have a sign that says tractor-trailer trucks must turn left, or no right turn, whichever way you want to.
Or, I guess, Amazon tractor-trailer trucks.
Amazon, yeah.
And that would be for the north access and the far northerly and the far southerly access roads as proposed.
See, I mean, again, if it gets to that, I mean, would there ever be a situation where non-Amazon trucks turn?
Yeah, because it's a right turn only for those inner two access points. So unless they meander from...
No, but I guess my question is, right, it's anyone, any tractor-trailer trucks going to the Amazon facility, right? Are those all owned by Amazon? Like if a sign says Amazon truck...again, this is why I worry about getting in the weeds of it. I don't know. I'd be...I'm fine with this as-is. If people want to put in a...put in a sign, someone needs to come up with some words that they think is appropriate. I'm struggling to find what I think is correct. So why don't we do this? Let's move on and talk about the lighting. When we get a chance to vote on the decision, if someone wants to suggest some language to put into the decision, then someone, please do that, and then we can go from there.
My name's Gary McCoy, I'm with Poyant Sign Company. Just to recap where we were at the last meeting, as it relates to the sign lighting, there's a lot of different ways, and we had a lot of different terms. We talked about internal illumination, external illumination, uplighting, downlighting, halo lighting, and that's really hard to show in a drawing, and really, everybody comprehend what it looks like in reality. So I thought it would be a good exercise to go through town and look at some signs that run the gamut of all those different types of lighting applications, take pictures of them, and get measurements of the light output with a light meter. So I'll just walk through these photos pretty quickly here. This is...and this is not...I don't know if some of these signs are grandfathered in, they're permitted, not permitted, whatever. This was clearly just an exercise to go into the field under the, a consistent environment with the same light meter, same conditions and everything, so we can have a comparison. So this first sign is right across the street. This is what you would call internally illuminated, where the whole face is lit. This measured out to 120-foot candles. And if anyone's not familiar, foot candles is really just a measurement of light, it's one lumen per square foot, something like that. Next sign is also, this is a downlit sign, and that is measured out at 99. And we can go to the next sign. This sign is actually, I think it's uplit and downlit, and that's 85-foot, so we're all kind of close to the same measurements here on these first three. This one is downlit, it's 113. Another downlit sign, this one's 90. And again, the reason you get these different measurements is the different light sources, different types of bulbs, which is why you can't really hold a consistent light output with a downlight or uplight situation. You can't control it. This is McDonald's, and that's at 45-foot candles, that's just that bottom sign there, which is kind of similar to what we're proposing. This plaza, this is 45, this is downlit, and I think there might be one 99, 66, and...
Sorry.
Oh!
Sorry.
Up one more, one more. Now this sign, I put two pictures of, because this is actually the application that we're proposing. So that's what we refer to as a push-through letter that's actually halo-lit. So although the lighting is inside the sign, it's not really backlit, it's a halo illumination. So if you scroll up a little bit, that's only nine-foot candles. So it's extremely less output than any of the other signs that we just, that we measured. I also brought a sample here, that's exactly the same thing that I can plug in and light if you'd like.
Can I ask you a question, just sort of intuitively looking at it? This doesn't look one-tenth of the other one. I mean, is it...what am I missing?
So there's a lot of things...when you're photographing anything that's lit, it can be difficult.
Okay.
These photos are not adjusted or enhanced in any way, they're straight-on, regular pictures and put in. So it is, it's tricky, which is why I brought this piece in.
Yeah, got it.
And, but the thing here, the demonstration here is, is, as I stated prior, my experience of over 40 years in the sign business, is that the indirect lit or externally lit signage application is going to produce more light pollution, and you cannot control it. What we're asking to do, or proposing to do, is we have the lights inside the sign, but they are contained, and the only emission of light comes around the perimeter of the letters, so it's really a halo light, so there's no light shedding out. So that's why when you measure it, you can, it's just, it's totally different. So would you like me to plug this in?
Sure. Should I turn the lights off?
Should I shut the lights off?
That doesn't mess up Cam.
Huh?
It's magic.
Should I turn the lights off?
You can see it's not very bright. And I don't know if you want to turn the lights off or what.
Turn them down.
And this is double-sided, so you can see it on both sides.
I always felt planning board meetings were romantic.
Okay, so what we do here is the face itself, which is usually plastic, this is metal, it's aluminum, it's laser-cut, and it's backed up with half-inch acrylic, which protrudes through the face. So if I turn it sideways, you can see how it sticks out. And then on the face of the letters, on this one here, just happens to be metal, but what we're proposing is opaque vinyl, which is basically what's on that kitchen bar sign. So that's exactly what we're proposing, only, obviously, it's a bigger scale, but the light is completely housed and contained, and it's really just a, what we refer to in the sign business, as a halo letter.
Okay. Kelly and Peter, are you guys able to see this?
I can see it, I can see it lit up. I'd probably have to defer to the planning board members in the room as to how it compares to something else, just...
I'll defer a description, I mean, we're, what, 10 feet away, 15 feet away? It's really not very bright.
Yeah.
So it's a, well, it's a worthwhile presentation.
What this does is it's really just enhancing the letters, so it's legible.
Right.
Yeah.
And the whole intent for the sign is to really make it legible. It's not a nightclub, we're not trying to attract attention, we're not trying to be, you know, animated and whatnot, it's really just to make it legible at night.
Okay.
Learned something tonight.
Yeah, that was a very helpful and effective presentation. I'm glad we made you do it.
So the next couple of slides, these are some renderings of the actual signs, in the best attempt possible to show them in this application here.
So just a quick question, so just to clarify, so that would be around nine-foot candles, that sign, like the Amazon sign?
The big sign?
Yep.
So the thing with when you... the thing with when you're measuring the light, like on something like this, it really, it's, if you're up close, like each one of these panels will probably be nine. If you're far away, you're going to get almost not, like, if you get eight feet away, you're going to get almost nothing. You're going to get all the ambient light. So I would say that the maximum you could probably get, get on the big sign would maybe, maybe be just about 15, but there's no way to know unless I measure it.
Got it.
But this is exactly, the exact thing that we're proposing. It's just in a bigger scale, but still, the light is contained in such a way that if you move the meter around, you're going to get different measurements. Whereas if you have the downlight, it's the same all the time.
Got it.
Okay. I think we're good. Is there anything else you guys want to present? What's up?
No, that's it. It's, no, the wall sign that you had seen before.
Yeah, I think everyone was pretty, as I recall, everyone was content with the wall sign. Okay.
So that, yes, that concludes our presentation.
All right, so why don't we take, Jean, there's a draft decision?
There is for both Lot A and B.
All right, so are they two separate decisions or one decision?
Two separate. There's two separate applications.
Okay. Are they the same, is it the same?
Yeah, essentially the same.
So why don't we look at draft Lot B sign master plan special permit decision first? We haven't closed the public hearings yet, so since we still have some things we want to talk about on these, keep it open. All right, so we're with the Lot B.
1450.
1450. Okay, so in order to confirm that what we saw is what is being installed, that's condition, special condition 15. The signage as depicted on the plan shall be installed substantially in accordance with the plans. Is that right, Jean?
Yep. So the, the plans include spec related to that light output? Right? Correct?
The, um, yeah, there, I believe the plans say push-through illuminated, illuminated lettering.
The one thing it not contained yet is last meeting, we talked about they're dimmable. And so I would propose potentially a condition that says we evaluate it 30, 60, or 90 days after they're illuminated to decide whether it's appropriate illumination and it may, you may be okay with it going up a little more or down a little bit more, but it would, it would take a condition to say we have to go look at them.
And are we able to like, I mean, we're told this is what the sign is going to be, like really this exact kind of thing. Are we able to take a picture of it and say that it's going to be substantially similar to this and have this as an exhibit?
Yep.
So let's do that. I mean, I think this was a very, it was very helpful to have that demonstration. And as long as you guys are comfortable with that that's what it's going to be, then let's make it so.
Can you give the specific spec of the light lumens on this sign?
Yeah, well, we can, we can, I guess we could add a page or however you want to contain.
An appendix.
Information of the lighting and the application as a insert to the joint package.
Yep. So we would just add a condition specific to an appendix that says it's going to be constructed and illuminated according to this.
Yeah, to match the sample. And you guys can have a picture, take a picture of it on your phone.
Technology.
The picture doesn't include Frank Holmes.
He must be present at all.
I have just a question. How are we going to know, like, that this is the, the brightness? How do we make that comparison when they're actually up?
So I think, I mean, I think we can, um, go and do a chat, yeah.
What I can do is, I'll see what the exact LED is in these, in this sample box. What the color code is and what the output is. We'll put that on that sheet and we'll call that out. I can call out the, the spacing. And, you know, how many LEDs per square foot, the output and the application of push-through. And that'll be the spec that'll go in the sign.
Right, okay, perfect. Okay. So does anyone have a condition that they want to suggest as to left turn only, no right turn? John, you have something?
Yeah, just a, just a quick idea. Amazon trucks, left only.
Simple. Kelly?
Yeah, that works. I mean, it's, it's the same. I think we're all in the same spirit. It's not the, Butters wanted to keep the large tractor trailers from turning right. So if Amazon trucks cover it, I think that's a great solution.
On the, yeah, the north access and the south access, signalize north and signalize south access.
Yep.
And so I just wanted, just to be clear on one point, that's going to
Replace the 495 sign then, right? We won't have two signs? Is that, just want to make sure we're on the, on the same page there?
I like the 495 sign though.
I think you're going to get better clients with the 495 sign than any other one.
I think so too.
I'd say in addition.
Okay, in addition, okay. Just wanted to.
In addition, yeah, in addition. I mean, I don't want to make it too busy, but.
Internally illuminated?
This one can have neon flashing lights. This is, yeah, don't, don't miss it.
And on the, on the exhibit A, I do have a typo. I called out calendar year 21 in two spaces instead of 22. So that needs to be amended.
Okay, all right. So, anyone else? Peter? Sean, John, anything else? Okay, so can we get a motion to close the public hearings as to 1450 and 1600 Osgood Street?
I don't make such a motion.
Motion moved to close the public hearing. Can we get a second?
Second.
Second, and all in favor. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Aye.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay. Can we get a motion to approve the special permits as amended? Both special permits for Lot A and Lot B with the amendments made, including the appendix, the specs, and the typo changes as well as the sign, the Amazon trucks must turn left sign.
All the same conditions.
With the same conditions, yes.
Soon.
Can we get a second?
Second.
All in favor. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Aye.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay. Thank you for working through it and, and I know we're kind of joking around with the signs, but that really, really was helpful. Both the pictures and the actual demonstration. That was really helpful.
I think the takeaway for me is you, you posed a real performance standard as opposed to a type. And that's what it should be. It should be the performance standard. So that, that was pretty helpful. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
And Eton, you closed both hearings.
Yes. We voted together, but it was closing both hearings.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving right along. All right, so 1450.
I think 198 Dale Street is here now.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, I apologize. I had class till 7:30 and I just got out.
No worries. No, you're right on time.
Right.
You just made, hold on, hold on, hold on, don't, don't say anything yet. New public hearing pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. This public hearing of the North Endover Planning Board will be conducted in person and via remote means in accordance with applicable law. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.North, I think that was too many W's, www.NorthEndoverMA.gov. For this meeting in person, attendance of members of the public and board members will be permitted. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so on Comcast Channel 8, Verizon Channel 46, or online at www.NorthEndoverCam.org. Every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town and North Endover website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceeding as soon as possible after the meeting. If members of the public would like to participate in this public hearing, but not attend the meeting in person, please email your question or comment prior to or during the meeting to Jean Enright@J E N R I G H T@NorthEndoverMA.gov. The question or comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly. So this, this, that, uh, item is, warning is going to be for 198 Dale Street, which is a new public hearing, as well as 1160 and 1116 Gray Pond Road. So first, 198 Dale Street, Paul and Heather Tequesian. Application for watershed special permit under Article 4, Part 5, and Article 10, Section 195, 10.7 of the zoning bylaw to authorize construction of a two-story garage or storage in the non-discharge zone and associated grading within the disturbed zone of the watershed protection district. The property is located in the R1 zoning district. Jean, why don't you tell us about it and then we'll hear from the applicant?
Sure, so the locus is shown on the screen. It's located on Dale Street to the right of the parcel. You see a subdivision, that's Beer Hill. To the left of the parcel, off of Dale Street is Beverington Place and Glenor Circle. So the corner parcel there, I think, used to be apple trees and some type of apple farm. So that's the proximity on Dale Street. The entire parcel is located within the 325 non-dischur, non-discharge buffer zone. The proposed construction is located outside of the 100-foot non-disturbance buffer zone. The stormwater peer review has been received and all comments have been responded to. Although a long-term pollution prevention plan has been provided, I suggest a condition of approval is that the owner sign and date it and that it is recorded as part of this decision. The plan addressed pavement sweeping, catch basin sumps and drain manholes, drain pipes, buried detention structures, and graded slopes and riprap outlets. I've prepared a draft decision for your consideration. It includes the standard condition restricting certain fertilizers and the use of car, coal tar-based pavement sealers. The conservation administrator has reviewed, reviewed and approved the wetland delineation. There was mention of removing kind of a juniper bed along the existing pool during the site visit with conservation agent. The applicant's been advised that should they want to remove that going forward, they would need to contact the conservation department. That is within the 100 feet. However, it's really a landscape bed, which doesn't really involve permitting for the watershed.
Okay. Okay, so why don't we hear from the applicant about that project?
Okay, so I think the engineer is attending remotely.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, they're proposing to do a new addition with a garage and to be serviced by a new asphalt driveway, which will have a curb and gutter on one side to direct storm water to a catch basin, deep some catch basin, the treated water, which will then go into a concrete galley system, where there'll be further infiltration, help groundwater recharge and prevent any water, more water from going out the site. So the posted conditions have less runoff and less volume than the pre-conditions. Uh, we had some comments from the last meeting, which we've addressed. So we moved the outlet from this, the concrete galley system to be going straight back out of the yard instead of going over into the neighbor's yard to the right or to the east. The applicant also wants to remove some trees. However, these will be replaced with some arborvitae's to the, on the east side of the property as well to, as a screen. And, um, applicant also wants to remove and replace the fence around the pool. We'll do it by hand without any, any mechanical equipment. So there will be no disturbance other than just removing fence posts and putting the fence posts back in.
All right, so is, is that shown on the plan? That's the first I'm hearing of that.
Um, it's not shown on the plan, just because there isn't, it would just be replaced and placed by hand.
So it's within the 100-foot buffer zone? Have you discussed it with conservation?
Yes, no, we haven't.
The applicant just wants to see if you would like to approve it.
I believe conservation would have jurisdiction on that, even if it's by hand.
Right, it'd be, I mean, you might have, you might be able to apply for a, um, small project waiver for a fence, you know, which is normally the case. I don't know when it's.
It's a, it's a damaged fence around the pool and it's just, it's more of a safety issue, but we'll go through the, the correct channel.
Yeah, I mean, usually, so I don't know this, what, how it works when it's part of another project.
Yeah.
Or if it would be considered part of this project. I know.
I, I'm sorry, Eton, it's, it's very hard to hear you.
Okay, I was saying, I don't know if it's, how it works generally for a fence with conservation. You just have to file for a, um, a small project approval. That's usually what they, for fencing, but you have, you do have to go through them. Even if we, even if we approve it, you still have to do that for fencing.
And, and I would add a finding of fact that it was discussed during the hearing and that that's part of the scope. Because that should be shown on the plan as well.
Okay.
So let's, um, okay, so without, okay, let's say he'll do that on another part of the project and get the applications through that. So just focus on the plan that we have now.
Okay, um, board comments, questions? Kelly, Peter?
No, nothing at this time.
Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Yeah, I would just note that it's about six tenths of a mile from the lake, but it's only about 600 or 700 feet from a very large wet, wetland area that drains into the lake through a stream. So it's actually closer to any runoff going into the lake than it might appear from the map. So just to reinforce that the conditions are, I think, important. Because it's closer to water draining into the lake than to the lake itself.
Right, so that would be considered the non-discharge zone, which we're allowed to do work in. We are outside of 100-foot buffer zone and, which is by law, no disturbance at all. So.
Right. No, no, I, I understand that. I'm just pointing out that, I'm not suggesting you're doing something you shouldn't do. I'm just pointing out that, that differentiation is caused to exercise care with the conditions of how it's done.
Right, so we've been, are the, the owners present or no? Okay, so the last, for, for the, for the last, um, I don't know, year or so, when we have these watershed special permits, we've been very open and trying to talk and educate owners that, um, just because you're not right on the lake doesn't mean that you don't have a significant impact or potential impact. So we put conditions in such as, you know, requiring certain fertilizers and things like that can't be used. And we want to make sure that the owners know that and that they also relay that to, you know, their builders, their engineers, their landscapers, right? People that they may not think need to know it because, you know, your random landscaper who comes, you know, once or twice a week, or twice a month, might not know unless you tell them. So we've, it's, it's more about education for us when we get these opportunities, that, that part. We look through the details of the plans. Obviously, we've gone through the stormwater review, things like that. But we try to like use this as an opportunity for education because the more we talk about it, the hopefully better it gets. So that's just where we're coming from on that. Okay. Okay, so Jean, what needs to, what do you think needs to be added to the, to the decision?
So, um, the stormwater peer review suggested that there are seven white pines and one oak tree proposed to be removed. However, it hasn't been specified how many would be replanted. And so she just referred to the board.
How many arborvitae's or how many?
I would suggest arborvitae's. I mean, they're a good screening tool. So I don't know if you want to do in kind, seven for the seven that pines that are coming down.
Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
Um, on the plan, we have that called out. Well, does white pine should be removed, typical of seven, replaced with arborvitae?
Right, and we're just specifying that all seven will. Right, and we're just specifying that all seven will be replaced, and would you like to say with six to eight-foot-high arborvitae's?
Yep. And then we'll, we'll have a finding of fact that, that fencing around the pool, replacement of fencing around the pool was discussed.
Yeah.
But is not being considered as part of this project. So it's not on the plan, it's not being considered, we're not saying you can't do it, we're not saying you can do it, you just got to go through conservation for that.
Different application.
Yep, yeah, and that shouldn't be difficult.
I did have one question. This is actually a general question. How is the great beaver pond doing these days? Is it expanding or contracting?
It seems to be expanding, again, it depends what season you're talking about, but if you, you know, if you go out there.
Hey, John, I apologize, can you get closer to the mic? I really couldn't hear you.
Yeah, what I said, Peter, is I asked about the great beaver pond behind it, is it expanding or contracting?
Thanks.
Yeah, and just, just going through that area constantly, it seems to.
I'm not sure.
Again, it seems to be big in certain parts of the year.
I'm sorry, whoever's speaking in the room, we can't hear.
You have to come to the podium and introduce yourself, sorry.
I'm sorry.
I should have said that earlier.
Yeah.
Just state your name and address and.
Yeah, I'm Bill Ferris, I'm the builder, on record for the, for the project that we're applying for here. And the question was about the beaver pond. And again, I'm not an expert on it, but just from sight, from working in the area, it seems to be pretty healthy. And again, like I said earlier, depending upon what time of year, that's, that's about all I know. I know the neighbors, it comes up into the yard a little more often than they'd like, and, and the beavers don't, don't help that if and when they're around, so.
That's for sure. I got my education in that from Dave Rand.
Yeah, of course, of course. Anybody that's in the neighborhood knows Dave Rand, so. He was a tremendous beaver battler in his day.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments?
We have a butters, yeah?
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's a public hearing. Come up, say your name.
I'm Jonathan Grossman of 206 Dale Street. I'm the neighbors of 198 Dale Street to the east, and we are just here to say, my wife, Caroline Poperzy Grossman, is also here to say that in terms of the removal of the trees, they're on the border of our two properties, and they're not in good shape, and we are in favor of their removal and replacement by the Takesians.
Okay, fantastic. Well, thank you for coming to us.
To clarify, they are pretty much dead.
Okay.
And they could fall and damage our, our roof, our property.
All right, so we want these trees out as soon as possible?
Yeah, these, we love trees, but these ones are, are done.
Okay, better trees. Okay, that's helpful. It's good to have neighbors that are supportive and that you guys are talking and, and helpful to one another, so that's good. Okay, so with that, can we get a motion to close the public hearing? As to 198 Dale Street? Motion make, we got a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, let's, so we're going to amend the decision to add the seven arborvitae's, 68 feet, did you say, Gene?
68 feet tall.
Okay. And we're also going to add that the owners will adopt and sign and record the pollution plan?
Yes, that's in there.
That's in there already?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, sorry, I did include it.
Okay. Let's finish reading the decision. And we'll add in that the, that we discussed fence replacement at the pool, which will not be part of this, will not be considered as part of the application.
Yep.
Anyone have any questions or comments or other, other changes to the decision? All right, can we get a motion to approve the?
One more question.
Yeah.
Would it be possible to have any of, do I need to go to the podium?
Yes.
Any of the amendments added tonight, and I'm not sure of the process on this, to get the, the draft decision, so it can be stamped tomorrow and filed tomorrow?
Probably not.
No?
It typically is, but I have a prior commitment, so it will be by Thursday.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
And that's, that's a 20-day appeal period, so it's filed.
Great, that's, that's all I was asking.
Yeah, it won't be until the next meeting, we'll, we'll get it done. Gene's got important business tomorrow morning.
That's all, that's all, thank you.
Yep. All right. Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the watershed special permit as amended? Motion make, we got a second?
Second.
All in favor? Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Did you call my name?
I did.
I'm sorry, I.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I vote yes. It's approved, will be written up as quickly as possible. Thank you. Thank you, neighbors.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, thank you, engineer. Okay.
All right. We just, sorry, just to clarify, so all I'm going to do is add on the plan, replace six, replace the trees with arborvitae's, face six feet, six feet, eight feet apart, and then they can be stamped and then submitted.
No, so you don't have to do anything, it's just going to be a narrative detailed in your permit, so, that we write.
Okay.
And it's not six to eight feet apart, although that's probably appropriate, they're six to eight feet tall.
Okay.
We're not putting in the, the little four feet ones.
So, yep, you'll get the decision, just follow the decision.
All righty.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, bye.
All righty. See if you guys can follow that. New public hearing, 1160 and 1116 Grape Pond Road, Brooks School, application for a watershed protection special, protection district special permit and site plan review special permit under Chapter 195, Article 4, Part 5, Article 8, Parts 1 and 3, 1 through 3, Article 10, Section 195, 10, West South of Town and North Andover zoning bylaw. The project proposes removal of two existing boathouses to be replaced with a single boathouse, removal, excuse me, and replacement of existing housing and improvements at 1116 Grape Pond Road, and removal of a portion of impervious driveway areas at 1116 Grape Pond Road. Work is proposed within general non-discharge and non-disturbance buffer zones. The project is located in the R1 zone. Hello?
Hello.
Gene, you want to tell us a little bit about our new hearing, and then we'll go to the applicants?
Okay, so Brooks School has permitted several projects in the recent years. The same consultant team has been hired for the proposed project. They're quite familiar with the property and the proximity to wetlands and the lake. I'm expecting a presentation, which did come in on Monday, it was sent to everybody via email and added to the packet. The application has been sent for stormwater peer review. I actually received the first response of that peer review today, and there are only two very, very minor comments that have to be addressed. A butter comment was received, I believe, on Friday morning, and that's included in the packet, and I have an email response to that, that I can read into the record tonight, once you read the butter comment.
Okay. All right, why don't you, gentlemen, tell us about what's going on?
Hello, my name is Andrew Leonard from AT Leonard Associates, I'm the landscape architect on the project. Anthony Cleaves from Whitman and Bingham, a division of Haley and Ward. With us also, we have Liz Martin from Brooks School, and we have Chris Doctor from Olson Lewis, who's the architect for the boathouse project. We look forward to presenting to you both projects and kind of walking you through the improvements of each, kind of at an overall level, and then open to any questions you have for us. Just an area of the campus, if you go to the next slide, it's.
It's going to fill it up a little bit.
It will basically give a, a general overview of the goals and intentions. We really want to replace some dated structures, support the current crew and sailing program. The original boathouses were built long ago for a smaller school and a smaller program, and updating it will really improve the program and also the protection of the, the equipment for the program. Looking to improve housing on campus and fold more faculty housing into campus, maintain and modernize infrastructure, maintain the services and emergency access, which we know are important also for the town's access to the lake, and move proposed structures further away from wetlands in the lake than the existing structures are. In all cases, we're looking to move back from the water. This campus map shows the, the focus areas, so the, the main core of campus is, is near the watershed line, which is kind of that royal blue line. Both are within the watershed. The faculty housing project is.
Sorry.
Sorry. Is close to the south entrance project, which was the last project we were before you for, related to the 1116 property. And then the boathouse is sort of planned southwest of that at the lake's edge, where there's two existing boathouses. So we're zooming in on the boathouse project, which is kind of down in, if you're looking at the aerial, down on the, the left in the, in the bubble area there. The existing conditions show on the bottom right, the existing dock and wall, the two boathouses, one of which is within feet of a tributary wetland to the lake. The other boathouse sits off to the side, about 30 feet away from the water's edge. There's a gravel drive that comes down, that exists, that comes all the way down to the two boathouses, and it is rather close to the dock wall that accesses an existing boat launch. The proposed project would maintain the gravel path coming down in the same location. It would take the two existing boathouses, which you see in red, away, we would demolish those. We would propose a new boathouse set back from that, so we're 20 feet further from the water at the closest point, and we're about 100 feet from the tributary wetland versus the existing boathouse, which is again, one or two feet from, from the wetland. We'd take the two old structures offline, and we would improve the support of the program so it would fit all the boats for the crew program within the lower level of the building, and then would have the support space and some area to get out of weather and things like that. Very similar program to the existing structures. So the boathouse itself is very similar, is proposed to be this, this picture, which is very similar to the existing Lyman Boathouse. For those who have been down there, it's the, the Brown Boathouse, close to the launch. So it has a overlook, all the boats would be stored in the lower level, and there'd be program space on the upper level, all within the footprint, which is basically set by the storage of the boats on the lower level. And we would look to set the building into the hill to avoid any, the building standing too high on the site. We're not proposing any toilet facilities or sinks or anything within the building because it's within the Zone A, which Anthony knows more about than I do, but what we're proposing is a remote toilet facility, which would be outside of the Zone A, which we've already received a variance from the State Plumbing Board to be able to do that. The faculty housing project, which is in the white circle you see on the screen now, there's an existing large home that unfortunately cannot really be reused for faculty housing the way it's constructed and built, and would be looking to take that structure down and extend the internal campus road, which you can see just above the existing large structure, and remove the driveway that goes across some wetlands in the front.
Wait, so go back, so remove the driveway that goes all the way down to Grape Pond and just connect it through those trees?
Yeah, connect it right where you kind of see, right at the edge of the white circle, you'll see a driveway on the, kind of the top left of the circle. We'd be extending that driveway along that edge, and we'll actually be pulling, the new houses will be much further away from the, the wetlands than the current houses. There's a wetland that runs towards the right-hand side of the bubble that the driveway crosses, and we want to remove all that impervious surface and restore that to meadow so that all the wetland areas are better protected, and I think we pulled back like 120 feet from the resources.
And the beginning portion of the driveway is the new south entrance?
Correct.
And so they're only demoing up until that cuts across the campus?
Yeah.
So this is that driveway, actually. So you can see on the bottom of the page is the existing house, and the driveway is that kind of circle area that goes straight up the page. And the top, you can see the existing, well, the south entrance that was approved, that was recently finished, in, in terms of its install, the overall project is still underway. But the proposed, it would be, if you go to the next slide, is to take out that driveway, so everything in green, we take all that hardscape out, all those hard surfaces out, and restore that to meadow. We are proposing to keep the culvert crossing for maintenance purposes and for people to walk through, and so we don't have people walking through the wet meadow. As you, so the, these pages sort of like have a match line almost, where you could see the, the house at the top, and then that, the, on the bottom of the page, you see the three existing faculty houses with the driveway. If you go one more slide, you can see that we'd be extending that driveway, and then proposing three houses that sit on each side of, of the property line, kind of off to the side. The red box is the existing house. You can see how far back we're pulling, the, the wetland goes across the top of the page, and then off far to the right. The purple line is the edge of the non-discharge zone and general zone, so two of the houses sit completely in the general zone, and one is on the edge of the non-discharge zone. We are proposing also to a outdoor pavilion space for students and the rest of the faculty and community to enjoy this parcel and, and the meadows and such that are over there, trying to engage students in, in that habitat. The houses we're looking to build are simple colonials, they'll actually not have garages, the new ones, but the, these are the exist, a picture of the existing houses, and the proposed structures are to very much mimic those houses with, so that whole area feels like a small neighborhood as part of campus. One note on infrastructure is we would be looking to extend water and sewer, hydrants, all those things to make sure that we have proper fire access and, you know, and eliminate an existing septic system, which the, the large mansion structure has. From a sequencing standpoint, we know it's really important that we start with erosion controls, this project's right on the water, and we want to make sure that we protect the water. Starting, the goal would be to start the boathouse and the faculty house, housing this summer, complete the boathouse for the spring 2023 season, and complete faculty housing by the end of 2023. I think the goal would be so faculty could be in there for August of 2023. We have submitted and received a variance for the boathouse structure as it's in the non-disturbance zone, is that right? Thank you. We have also submitted to the Conservation Commission, we had a quick introductory meeting. In fact, they asked that we keep speaking with, with you all as a board before we go back to them, so we actually won't see them now until May, May 11th. And we have also received the, like, like we mentioned, the variance for the plumbing, the separation of the plumbing from the structure because of Zone A.
So why don't I, why don't I read into the record the butter comment, and then you can add in any email that you've sent, and then we can take board questions or comments.
I'm sorry, can you send me that variance from the Plumbing Board, the State Plumbing Board? And the ZVA variance, when you receive it?
This is from Steve French, Friday, April 22nd. Hi, Gene, as per our conversation this morning, my wife and I own the property of Budding Brooks to the south of the proposed project. 1090. 1092 Great Pond Road. While we have no objection to the current plans, we feel that the very large and bright city-style streetlights that burn 24/7 along the new south entrance to campus are obnoxious. We don't see why they can't be on motion detectors, and I was rebuffed when I asked John Packard about this last October. Obviously, when the south entrance plans were distributed to the budding property owners, this detail of their plan was omitted, as was the fact that the south entrance would become the main and only entrance currently being used. We can live with the traffic and are generally supportive of the school, but they are one powerful entity, and their disregard for our concern about the lights promoted me to call you. If there are plans for more lights of this nature not shown in the detail of the new faculty housing, we would certainly object to that. Further, I would be most appreciative at this juncture if they would look at the plantings along the new road that might mitigate the lighting pollution being caused. Thank you in advance for reading this into the record. Sincerely, Stephen B. French.
So I provided that email correspondence to representatives at Brooks School. I received a response today from Elizabeth Martin, Director of Facilities and Planning at Brooks. So the comment is, Gene, I am forwarding this to respond to Mr. French's email related to our site lighting permanently on 24/7. Our site lighting is controlled by Simcon web automation. When the south entrance project was in the punchless phase, we did have months of issues with Simcon area and online reps coordinating with our facilities and our IT department to get the new light pole to communicate with the rest of the campus. As of 12/21/21, all site light poles are on dusk-to-dawn schedule, and our site lighting is not on 24/7. When was?
This letter?
This letter? I think I received it on Friday. Friday morning.
Problem went away, probably would have sent the letter.
Exactly, so I think, I think it's the brightness in addition to the 24/7.
So do we have lighting plans for what's being proposed?
I'm sure we do.
Yeah, we actually are not proposing the same post-lighting in the area of faculty housing or the boathouse. They're not the core access points to the campus or the campus core. So they'd just be like the other faculty houses. They have lights at their doors and like some motion lights up high for safety. But it's not the same post-lighting going to either of the projects that are, we're just presenting.
But the previous application likely has post-lighting specs.
Yes, it does.
Illumination. And I just, since Friday, I have not tied that all back to see if they're in compliance with that.
Okay, so, but that's a separate issue. So we can look at if they're in compliance with it. But separately, I'd like to see the lighting plans for this one, just so that we can, so you know, as part of any decision, we can confirm that this is what was being told to us. And this is something that we've done more recently. I think the last time we had Brooks was three or four years ago, maybe four years ago?
A couple of years, right?
At least, right?
Yeah.
Three?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it was, yeah, I think it was four. So we've been trying to really focus on lighting, because it obviously has a, you know, strong impact on neighbors. So I'd like to see a lighting plan, and that way we can incorporate, if, you know, if we're all comfortable with the lighting plan, we can incorporate that into the decision, and that's what you'll be held to, so everyone knows, there's no, hopefully no surprises. So if we could work on that. All right, so that's great. So Gene, what's next on, for this, what are the next steps?
Well, I think to John's point, I mean, I think he, his concern was more than 24/7, and so I'll pull out the plans associated with the south driveway and see if we can make any improvements to the condition he's describing.
Sure.
I mean, he's, he's insinuating they're lighting up his house. So I drove by, there's certainly seven of them or so, six to eight lights that, and it's pretty open from there to his lot. And his house sits up front of Great Pond Road, so it's kind of even with those lamp posts.
On the 1116 side of the wall, there's probably four lights that sort of face towards the French's. And then the lights do continue, so if they see down the road, there would be probably about a total of seven that you might be able to see.
Okay, so yeah, well, whatever we can do, either mitigation-wise, landscaping-wise, or brightness-wise. I mean, we don't, we don't want a safety issue as well, so we just kind of.
It just feels to me that the party should be able to work something out.
Yeah, it's just a clear glass. It's not shielded, it's a lantern and style light, so. So other than that, stormwater review should certainly be wrapped up with, within the next go-round. However, your meeting's on
Next week.
Next week on Tuesday, and so, yeah, I'd probably be challenged to write decisions for next week. But we certainly could, assuming stormwater gets wrapped up and this lighting issue gets closed, probably prepare draft decisions for, actually, it's early June at that point, because town meeting is on the 17th, and then we meet June 7th.
Okay. So we're gonna have limited meetings in May, because we have town meeting, we have a meeting next week. So just stay with Gene, talk with the neighbors. If we can get everything squared away, happy to kind of wrap this up at the meeting of June, and then you can be on your, on your way. Okay?
Aton?
Yes, Peter, yes.
I don't want to interrupt you, just when you have a moment.
No, go ahead.
I have several points I'd like to make.
Okay, please do.
Okay, now's a good time?
Now's a great time.
And can you hear me okay?
We can.
Great. So first, I'd like to just acknowledge the importance of Brooks School as a steward of the lake as our sole drinking water supply. And the reason I want to take a moment to do that is, if my understanding is correct, Brooks is either the largest owner of lakeshore property, or if not the largest, certainly one of the largest. Their property on the lakeside of Great Pond Road is in the vicinity of 180 acres. And just by comparison, Rolling Ridge, which is another large property on the lake, is just 36 acres. And the trustees of reservations, Wyer Hill Property on the far side of the lake is 116 acres. All large lakeshore property owners, but Brooks is really a very big player in stewardship of the lake, because most of that, all of that 180 acres, not quite all, but most drains into, into the lake that we use for drinking water. So what I've seen over the years is that Brooks is quite aware of the extreme sensitivity of that property, you know, absolutely beautiful parcel, and just how much the town relies on their stewardship of the drinking water supply. So thank you to Brooks and the care that you exercise when you take on projects. The second point I'd like to ask Aton is, this strikes me as a type of project that might really benefit from a sidewalk. I think the presentation that Brooks has made is really excellent. You know, again, as usual, one of the best. But being able to see where these structures are going in relation to the existing ones and the movement of the roads is, I think, really helpful to be on-site and take a look at it. What, what are your thoughts about that, Aton?
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I got a good sense of it from, from, I thought from what they've described, but I certainly don't have any objection to it. Thoughts, members?
We haven't done it for a while, we should do it, it's fun.
I like, I mean, I like to go out and see what's going on. Yeah.
So my understanding is they put survey markers out anticipating that you'd like to have a site visit?
So we've staked out the location of the proposed boathouse, one of the gravel walking paths, as well as the faculty housing building. So they are staked currently.
Okay.
Great.
So, timing. We have a meeting next week. I'd like to see the, I'd like to see the illumination plan too, maybe beforehand, just so that we can have it, so that, you know, just see what else we can get for next week, any other things, and then maybe after that.
Yeah, you have a pretty big gap, because town meeting, meeting is only a half hour or so. So if you want to schedule something between that and June 7th, I can send out a poll to see when people are available.
Okay, well, how, what, what works for the school? Their particular day of the week, or? Okay.
Does the board prefer Saturday mornings versus early evening, or any sense?
I can do either. It's up to what the group wants.
Unfortunately, Saturday mornings are pretty much out with T-ball and soccer season.
Yeah, I'd prefer an early evening.
Yeah, I can do an evening as well. Hopefully, I mean, at least for me, not before 5:00 or 5:30 is better, and even as late as 6:00 is best for me.
So how is 6:00 the 24th of May? It's a Tuesday night.
That's what I was looking at. Hold on.
That works for me.
That works for me.
So 6:00 PM?
Okay.
So 6:00 PM on the 24th, meet at the boathouse area?
Where do you park? Is it new park? Well, you can only go in through the new entrance, right?
Well, you can park along that gravel path, right? Where, there's a gravel path leading towards the boathouse?
Oh, there is.
You can go in the new entrance.
So, Aton, I've got a couple other points, if I could, please.
Yes, go ahead.
The second thing is that large private residence that was sold and purchased by Brooks that you're proposing tearing down and replacing with the faculty housing. Again, appreciate the care that you're doing along that exposure to the lake. A little bit of recent history that you may be aware of is there was extreme cutting of mature trees along that shoreline. It's probably only, you know, 70 feet from the previous property line between that house and the Brooks School property line by the boathouse. There's probably something on the order of a couple dozen trees larger than eight or 10-inch diameter. They were actually on a low-lying piece of land that floods in high water, and for most of the year is barely out of the water. And if you paddle past that, you can still see all the stumps. It was really egregious, clear cutting along the lakeshore, just clear violation of the protective measures for the lake and the watershed. So that's a section of the shoreline that really took a beating. No fault of Brooks, it was not your property at the time. But it does bring to mind that if there are any sort of buffer area mitigations that you can put in place for that first 20, 30, 40 feet from the lakeshore heading up that gentle sloping meadow towards where you're gonna have the new faculty houses, any type of best practice shoreline buffer planting or mitigations, I, this is just an ask. I think it's an opportunity for Brooks to, again, show best practices for protection of the lake. And I would just ask that maybe you think about what you could do. It's a, it's a very open meadow that goes down to the lakeshore there, and really would be a terrific place for sort of best practice buffers for the lake. I'm not asking you to make a commitment for that. You know, you have to follow the rules, you obviously know them. But I'm asking if you can think about some type of really good best practice for that area that suffered prior to your purchase. All I'll ask you now is if, if what I'm asking for is clear, I'm not asking for any commitment or agreement to that.
Yeah, I believe we understand the area you're talking about. Be to the south of the boathouse area.
Yes.
Yes.
Correct, yeah, thank you. South and east maybe of the boathouse.
Yeah, yeah, more into the cove, a little bit there.
Yeah, correct, absolutely, there's a little cove there, yeah. Okay, thank you very much for entertaining that thought. And then I think I just have a couple other points. I want to refer to a study committee authorized by the Town Board of Selectmen on October 1st, 2001, authorizing the town manager to establish a committee to study issues related to access and use of Lake Chickoac and the surrounding area. The final report, and this is titled Lake Chickoac Access Study Committee. The final report is dated May 20th, 2002. There are, on the order of probably 20 different points, committee recommendations, and votes. I should note that the members of the committee was Susan Haltmeyer, Board of Select, Select Board, Lieutenant Carney, Police Department, Linda Mersiak, Water Treatment Plan Director, Bill McAvoy, Recreation Department, Al Manzi, Conservation Commission, and Ray Santilli, Assistant Town Manager. The resident members were Brian Collins, Jim LaFawn, Scott Lindquist, Steve McCarthy, Kirk Olson, Frank Reganese, and Kevin Sparks. One of the 20 issues included a warrant article that the Select Board recommended and was voted on eliminating the use of gas engines on the lake. This report very carefully and very specifically notes that Brooks School was given a waiver to operate gas engine boats on the lake. And there's a very important reason for that. The Brooks boating season, particularly the rowing shells, the crew shells, operate during the time of the year when the water temperatures are quite cold. So any good crew safety practice always has safety in chase boats available. It's absolutely essential, there's no debate of that. In this report dated 2002, there was discussion with Peter Ulrich, who was the varsity crew coach at Brooks School. He met with the committee to discuss the requirements of the crew program. For example, talked about the size of the boating program, the number of crew shells, the number of aluminum launches powered by gas engines, the size of the gas engines, number of canoes, and number of sailboats. Noting that the engines were 9.9 horsepower, closed-case, four-stroke engines. And the importance of avoiding bringing invasive species into the lake by visiting schools, bringing their own crew shells. And what this committee voted on, seven to zero, is that in the review of Brooks School's use of the lake, to be regularly reviewed, the town should, and I'm quoting here, "discuss with the representatives of Brooks School how, over time, the use of gas engines could be reduced." For example, the use of electric engines as soon as the technology becomes available. And so I want to raise two issues here now and ask that the applicant have some answers for us next time, if that's possible. The first is, what is the current size of the boating program that the new boathouse will be designed to accommodate? And following up from this report, I think it would be very helpful to have number of shells, number of sailboats, number of canoes, number of safety chase boats, and size and type of current gas engines. And the reason I'm getting at this is, I'm interested in whether or not the design of the new boathouse is accommodating the existing boating program or factoring in an increase in the boating program. I'm not suggesting that we necessarily comment on that, but certainly should be aware of increased use of the lake as we try to balance conservation for the drinking water supply with reasonable amounts of recreation. We certainly allow the town to use the lake recreationally with hand-powered boats. And the second thing I would like to ask for an answer on is, this report specifically caveats that waiver of gas engines until the point where technology could allow electric engines. And of course, the reason for that is, there's no intent or interest in this report to make any risk of safety, water safety, the use of these chase boats. Absolutely critical for the school to use those. I would note that there are a number of companies that for some years now have been very successful making electric engines for boats as large as 70 feet, including even including even heavy tugboat-type boats, but also electric outboard engines for exactly the type of boats that Brooks is using for safety chase boats. So these electric outboard engines are now in fairly wide use. I'll just give you one example, a company called Elco, E-L-C-O, which stands for the Electric Launch Company, is a well-known manufacturer of reliable electric engines and electric outboards. So I would be very interested to hear whether or not the design of this boathouse is going to incorporate the transition to electric engines. I mean, certainly there would have to be some type of recharging consideration brought to the boathouse to do that. And would be a welcome change from transporting and handling gasoline near and on the lake. So are those two questions something that could be addressed by the next meeting?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Really appreciate it. And if there's interest in a copy of this report that refers to Peter Ulrich, I mean, I assume Peter's not there. This is two thousand and two. I think maybe Tote is your coach now, perhaps? I'm not sure.
Yes.
Yeah. So I could certainly make a copy of this available to Gene or to the school if it, if that helps. It's a, it's about a twelve-page report.
Since you referenced it, why don't you send it to Gene so we can at least include it in the packet so we can all take a peek at it?
Sure, we'll do. Yep, thanks. And I appreciate your patience as I walk through these questions and points.
Now I'm Googling electric boats, so.
So that commitment is for the May third meeting, for both a lighting plan for the proposed project as well as the vote response. Okay?
Okay. Alright, so everyone's got their homework. Alright, so why don't we continue until May third? Fantastic. Thank you guys for the presentation tonight.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks so much. Well done.
Okay. Can we get a motion to approve the minutes from April fifth? Motion make. Can we get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Kelly?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Aye.
And I vote yes. Okay, Planning Board Report. I think the only, so there are a couple of items that we still haven't voted on, that we made recommendations at town meeting, or we voted to make recommendations at town meeting. One of them was the Academy Road. One of them was the Great Pond Road. We're gonna wait and see if we can get some, hopefully, maybe next meeting, we can get some more information from the town about those two proposals, cause we just haven't had any yet, which will then maybe hopefully allow us to make a better recommendation when it comes to town meeting. So we're, we're not really doing anything with those tonight, but I do, I am anticipating and hoping that we can have someone come and talk to us about that. We did get something in the packet from Bill Callahan about one-forty Academy Road. So people can just read that, and then hopefully we can have someone from the town to answer questions and things like that.
And I'll carry that to the next meeting when we have somebody.
Yep. The, which one's the CPC? Is that fifteen?
Article fifteen.
Okay. Article fifteen, based on our conversation and our vote, and Peter's wordsmithing and education there, the CPC made an amended recommendation. John?
Yes, they narrowed the scope of the work so that it was very clear that-
John, can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Peter. They, the committee narrowed the scope of that specific appropriation for the boat ramp to basically make it not a boat ramp, a hand-carried boat access. So the, you know, the description of what the it was changed to narrow the scope so that there was no ambiguity that it was a potentially drive-in of boat ramp.
So the amendment-
Thank you, John.
The amendment specifically excludes trailered boats and in accordance with all existing lake access regulations.
Thank you very much. I think that's a very important update for the stewardship of the lake and also allows us to still make progress on this very good initiative to improve safety of that launch area.
So with that, I would suggest we make a motion to amend our recommendations simply to favorable action on the CPC. It'll be cleaner in the Planning Board Report that way, now that that bullet four has been amended in conjunction with how we were looking.
That's fine, if you wanna motion that, but the warrant will still print with except bullet number four. And so that might need some clarification at town meeting.
That's fine. We can clarify at town meeting. That's fine. So could I get a motion to amend our recommendation to favorable action on Article fifteen?
I will, for the, yes, for the reasons stipulated. I will make that motion.
Okay, motion make. Can we get a second?
Second.
Second. Alright, all in favor? Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Aye.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay.
I'm gonna strike all the except four and the alternative language.
Yep. And at that town meeting, we'll, when we're asked for our recommendation, we'll clarify. Okay, good. That was a good use of the process. Okay, anything else before we adjourn? Oh, there is one other thing. As to the bylaw amendments. So John and I had a meeting with the moderator. So as you all know, we have an unusual situation where the Planning Board put forward the article, ultimately voted against favorable actions or recommended unfavorable action. So we still need to present the article. So our thought was that, after discussion with the moderator, the best approach would be that John and I together put, John is a senior member, myself is the chair, put together about a five-minute presentation, a factual presentation, to be read at town meeting, just giving the facts of the bylaw, what the heights are, what the setbacks are, how the bylaw works in terms of the process, appeals process, things like that, the different areas, things like that, without really any advocacy, just really strict, these are the facts of what the bylaw, if voted upon favorably, what it says. After that, we would go to, I can make a presentation about why people may wanna vote in favor of the bylaw. Three, four, five minutes, whatever time is picked. Then someone who voted in oppositions, that could be John, or Peter, or Kelly, really whoever wants to, can make a same presentation, three, four, five minutes, about why someone may not want to vote in favor of the bylaw. And then we just open it up as usual to public. It could go either way. It could go for or against. That was just the moderator's suggestion, but just to make it simpler. So just wanted to get people's opinions on that as a process for getting everything before the town to vote. Any thoughts, questions, comments?
No, and I guess that's a standard way of doing it. I guess that's how I would look for it, right? Whether we're favorable or unfavorable, just that we're following whatever standard process.
Well, there, the thing is, there really isn't a, a standard process for this particular procedure. So normally what happens is you make a motion, and then you present why you want people, someone will make, someone will, I mean, I guess it is sort of, someone will make a presentation about what it is. But usually the what it is and the advocacy are kinda wrapped into one. So usually, instead of five minutes of presenting what the facts are and five minutes of saying why you should be for it, it's ten minutes of what is it and why you should be for it altogether. We wanna try to separate that out because there are, you know, two sides from the Planning Board of, one, the majority voted unfavorable, minority voted favorable. You know, we want to be able to give people both those sides of why they may wanna vote. But we also wanted a kind of a joint, we didn't wanna get the facts mixed up in that. We wanted a kind of a consensus fact so that people aren't saying, well, those are your facts, you know, pro side. Those are your facts, against side. We wanted kind of a joint facts of things that are agreed upon pretty much by everybody.
I guess I don't, I guess what I'm just trying to understand, so as a planning board, we voted unfavorably for it. So why wouldn't we just do the facts and then rather than advocacy, just say why we voted unfavorably? Why would we do both? Cause is that what we normally would do if we weren't, if it was a split vote, present in favor?
Yeah, go ahead, Peter.
Can, can I offer a perspective on that, Kelly? I don't wanna interrupt you, but just if I could offer a perspective?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I'm sorry, Aton, is that, is that okay?
No, no, I said, go ahead. I said, go ahead. Yeah, please.
Yeah, thanks. So it, it reminds me, Kelly, of the last sort of big and controversial project, which was the marijuana proposal, sixteen-hundred Osgood. And there, I think it was quite similar, except it was three in favor and two against. And in that case, and Aton, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you were chair at that time as well, and-
No, I wasn't.
I thought for the, for the town meeting, you may have been.
I know, I wasn't, but I made the motion because I was in the favorable.
Yes, you did make the motion. Thank you.
Right, but we had a minority opinion, which John gave.
Right. Correct. And, and in, in that case, Aton made a motion to allow the minority opinion, which was not in favor, to make a brief presentation in addition to the majority opinion. And I just remember that, and, and I just thought it was such a remarkable exercise of balanced sort of public service. It, you know, in all my time on the Planning Board, that was, you may recall, those of you who were there, that was very heated moment when Aton made that motion. And it just really stands out as a class act that, look, it was a close vote, strongly held views both sides. Let's try to represent that responsibly to, you know, our neighbors at town meeting. And it just really stands out, Kelly, as just a great example. So in this case, you know, I'm, I'm kind of on the different side. I'm on the majority side now. But I, I can't help thinking how helpful that was in that example. Not the same example, but that's where I'm coming from. So I, I mean, I, I do think you ask a very good question, and I would also say that I'm, I am in favor of this approach. Thank, thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Awesome. Thanks, thanks for the reminder, Peter. I wasn't on the board then, but I was certainly there voting. But I forgot that, that nuance, and I think that is very important, very important. So we're kind of following what we've done before. When we're split on important things, it's great to show both sides. Sounds like a great idea. Thank you.
And the thing we talked about with the moderator too, is if one of us presents the facts, just one of us could, I don't think there's really been a disagreement on the board about the facts of what the, what the bylaw says and what it would do. It's a question of whether that's an appro, whether that's, you know, something that we're in favor of and how appropriate it is. But if one of us were to present the facts, then, then it seems like the pro or con side to those things would say, no, those are your facts. So we thought about, it would be a good show kind of of what Peter said, of good faith, that we can agree on facts, and then we can have a logical, rational discussion of what those facts mean and why someone may wanna vote one way, why someone may wanna vote another way, and then everyone can get up and, and have their piece, and hopefully we can get through it in relative harmony. So.
Perfect.
So that's what, that's, so that's, so that's the plan. Gene's gonna hopefully help us put together a slideshow. We'll go through that. We'll get that. And then I think we just need to know, you know, from John, Peter, Kelly, you guys, you know, whoever wants to make the advocacy portion, just let us know, and we'll go from there. Okay? And we're, we're not far away, right? What are we, three weeks?
Three weeks.
Yeah, and we're gonna be inside this year.
Inside, at the high school. We will be up on the stage. I'm not sure the positioning yet between the, the Planning Board and the Finance Committee and the-
But the fieldhouse will be the primary room. The cafeteria is the primary spillover, and then the, what do you, auditorium.
Yeah. So, okay, excellent. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved. Seconded. All in favor? Peter? Kelly? Yeah.
Yes.
Peter?
Aye.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Alright, thank you, everybody. See you next week.
Thanks.
Have a good night.